All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Pittsburgh Board of Education meeting. If you would, please stand and rise for the P- for, ah, the Pledge of Allegiance. Sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the red flag for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could get a motion to approve the agenda this evening? Thank you, Robin. Thank you, Sarah. Any edits? All in favor? Any opposed? That carries. Thank you. Next, I'd like to welcome Ms. Jacob for Barker Road Middle School report.
Good evening. I just want to start by saying thank you to the board for hosting such a wonderful breakfast for our Barker Road staff and coming on our tour. Hopefully, it was not too scary at times going underneath the pool, but we appreciated you all being there, and it was really nice for the staff to be able to interact with you, so thank you so much for that. To start us off this evening, and I really want to focus on three overarching goals for this school year. And it's, it's, I've got them separately listed, obviously, but really, they all blend into each other and support each other. So I hope I don't become repetitive, but there is quite a bit of overlap because they're so entangled with each other and support us as a learning community. The first thing I'd like to talk about is safety. So this year, we moved to a single point of entry. All of our students and visitors come through our main office door, and I get to see selfishly, I get to see every student enter the building every morning between seven and 7:35. There's some quiet nods. There's some hellos and good mornings, maybe a grunt or two in there, is any good middle schooler, you know, displays, but it's really been wonderful in that the kids might have to walk just a little bit further down the sidewalk to come in that single point of entry, but you really get a good pulse of the building and what's going on on any given day. So I've been very thankful for it. It's nice to see the kids in the morning, and it's been quite a nice routine. All our visitors also come in that way to ensure that we know who's entering the building throughout the, the school day, which is extremely important for us. We've also done a lot of work with the students around not letting visitors or adults that come to the door. If you, you know, even if you know them, you don't open the door for them, and that's been really important, too. We actually had the whole girls soccer team tell one of our staff members they couldn't come in because they didn't have their swipe badge. So they got big kudos the next day for that. Not only have we been talking about physical safety of the building, but we've also been talking about safety as a student and what our, what our staff and students' responsibilities are as Barker Road students and staff. So we've been talking a lot about how, what are the expectations as we walk the building, as we are in the cafeteria, in the classroom, in PE class, or even in our extracurricular clubs and activities, you know, keeping our hands to ourselves, making sure that we're using not only a safe body but also safe words, so showing that respect to each other, to our peers, to staff members, and to anybody, really, that they see in the building, which then kind of leads me into this other idea of this strengthening of our community and building great relationships at Barker Road. So this has been a huge cornerstone for us this year, led by Superintendent Pirro and, and our opening day. We've really been focusing not only with building relationships within our staff but also as a learning community. And we started out right from the get-go with our opening day assemblies with students, with our parent orientations as well, with our web leader orientation with our sixth graders. You'll see that top picture there. We got to take our whole sixth grade class over a course of three days to Camp Arrowhead for community, or for team building activities, and it was really a great, not only was it just great to leave the building, but it was just great to be able to see the kids interacting, having fun, engaging with each other, mixing, mixing up amongst each other, you know, because remember, they're all coming from different elementary buildings, so this is really their first time as a class together, which was really powerful. So our sixth grade teachers were part of that as well, and it was a wonderful three days for our sixth grade class. We also have been implementing something called Core Connection Time, which I'll highlight in a second. I'm, I'm going to get to that when we talk about our core principles, but that's been another really important time. Our counselors and mental health team have all been in, pushed into teams this year up to this point, actually, really into, it was just into the fall that they completed pushing into each team of students at grade levels, and they were able to sit in small group circles and talk about starting of the school year, what is it like for our students, what are some of the things that are on their mind, and how do we process through being, you know, in a new school year, in middle school at this time? So that was really powerful and, and a big shout out to our mental health team for that. And then we also have done, or we, we have done one activity, our DOT project, which was done on Superintendent's Conference Day in November, where we, as a staff, basically had all of our students up on a list on big poster papers on, in our whole gym, and we had staff go around and identify students in which they had a connection. We plan to use that in combination with our trusted adult activity, which is actually happening tomorrow during flex, so we have been planning for that today at our faculty meeting and over the last couple of weeks. And our trusted adult activity is a companion to our DOT activity where students then identify a trusted adult or adults that they can identify as supports within our building. So after both of these are completed, we'll then cross-reference the data to really hone in on and put interventions in place to make sure that we're not leaving any student without a strong connection, and also importantly, making sure that staff know what they mean to students as well, because often we, we don't really acknowledge that connection as well. So again, some key things that we've been doing up to this point to really focus on building that strong relationship and continue to foster that as we move forward. I mentioned Core Connection Time, and that leads me to our Core Principles reboot. So this actually was something that came out of the end, or really last school year, but really the work was done at the end of the school year. Our staff, we have seven core principles that have been established for some time now, and our staff was acknowledging last school year that we really needed to come back to these core principles and really instill them back in our learning community with our students, with our staff, with our families. I don't know if it was COVID that we kind of lost our way a little bit, some transitions, but we felt strongly as a staff that we really wanted to focus on this, on the core principles this year. So we got together as a whole staff at the very end of June, right after the school year had concluded, and put some really thoughtful work around how do we methodically work through these seven core principles to really make sure that kids not only understand the core principles, but then how they connect them as, connect to them as well. So we did, there's our core principles. We created, we utilized our flex time, which is a weekly time, 30-minute time on Wednesdays, and we utilized our flex time for this purpose. And what we did is we broke the core principles into two-week chunks. So basically, each core principal had a two-week dedicated timeframe to them. We started with kindness because we felt that that was the most approachable to start with for our students, and the first week, and the first week for all of them, but the first week basically is a lesson in which our staff is able to teach and instruct about our core principles. For our flex groups, we were able to get our groups as small as possible. So essentially, every certificated staff member had a group of students that was assigned to them for each Wednesday. This allowed us to get down to anywhere from nine to 12 students per group, so they were very small, very intimate groups that we were able to have these conversations in. So the first week, the students would learn about the core principle, and then the second week is what we called Core Connection Time. So this was time that we spent, again, talking about how does that core principle connect to you? What does it look like in your world? What does kindness look like to you in the hall, you know, if you can identify it in the hallways of Barker Road? Or what does it mean to be kind to a peer and so forth? And we led the students through, in these very small groups, we led the students through these really important conversations. This was a, a really important piece of it because it not only gave them the ability to connect to these, but they also got to use their voice, and we knew that that was really important. So we got to hear from the students. We elevated what was personal and important to them through these seven core principles, and it's been really successful. I think that the staff has really been happy with the way that this has all kind of played out, the kids, that it's, it's so, if I can go back real quick, we got shirts, too. So that was really important as well. So the whole staff, thanks to our very generous student council, the staff got shirts that said Barker to the Core, and that was our coined term for our reboot, was Barker to the Core. So if you talk to a Barker Road student, you probably will, if you ask them what it means to be Barker to the Core, hopefully, they will acknowledge what it means, and we tag it into pretty much everything we do. So any announcements on the Morning Bark, you know, newsletters that go out to family, it's all about being Barker to the Core, which has been really important, and the kids, I, it's caught on and they're using it. So we look forward to continuing this work the rest of this school year and beyond to give those, our students that foundation. So again, if you're in the building, ask them what it means to be Barker to the Core. But those, those three areas of focus have been incredibly important, and like I said, very much in support of each other, as you can see, all very much intertwined, which I think the kids feel as well, so. With that, this is a little picture of our, just to highlight the fact that we are doing field trips again. This was our earth science students at Men and Ponds Park in a very nice, surprisingly nice November day. So that was it. Any questions?
Well, I just want to say thank you for inviting us in and giving us the tour and spending time with your staff. We had a great time. It was a lot of fun. Thank you.
Of course, of course.
I would just add that you can't underestimate the importance of teaching students the values of being kind and being respectful and being responsible, how to persevere, especially at the middle level when their worlds are all over the place, right? And they're very egocentric and they're, 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 they're about themselves, right? And so I really appreciate the reboot. I appreciate the focus. I think that it sets the tone for learning. When you have an environment where students can model those things, then it's a lot easier to take in the academic portion of school. So thank you for taking the time and setting the precedence for.
Absolutely. It's the Barker Road staff, too, so.
Yeah, well, thank you to staff as well.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks. Okay, with that, could I please get an approval on the minutes from last meeting? Thank you, Jeff, and thank you, Renee. Any edits? All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Looking at the Board of Education report, on the agenda are all of the upcoming meetings. Anybody have any reports out from recent meetings? Want to do it? Go ahead, Sarah.
Just, we'll share quickly that last week, we had our legislative Zoom meetings. Big thank you to Mike Vesby for attending. He was very helpful in talking about foundation aid and some of the current economic factors that we're facing, and also to Shayna for providing a follow-up on mental health and what we're seeing in the schools. Those were two of the key topics that we were talking about with our legislators. We had 12 legislators or office representatives attend, and over 30 NCSBA members. It was a great turnout. We did follow up with them on, on some of the additional questions that they had relative to safety and security, mental health, and, and foundation aid, so we're looking forward to revisiting those topics with them at our legislative breakfast in February.
Great. Thanks, Sarah. We'll start with Renee on the audit oversight, and my guess is it'll be shifted over?
I'm sorry to say, I was not in attendance. I had a family emergency, but Mike, I know you're going to do a great job. Robin was there, Jeff was there, so I'm looking forward to hearing what happened.
All right. Yeah, just real, real quick, it was, it was a brief meeting. Dr. Kimmer did an excellent job, and we talked about the comptroller reports as it pertains to cybersecurity and the additional measures that we have in place that we do every day to really ensure network safety, user accounts. That's a big topic statewide, so there was an excellent presentation, brief presentation on that topic, and, and we appreciate that. So we are, you know, very well prepared if, if in fact that area is ever audited, so, so that was, that was outstanding. Really, and I'll, and I'll do this now, it'll save time, in terms of the, the financial report, we reviewed the single audit for federal funds, which is very routine. The only thing to note is obviously the additional, additional funds provided by the federal government for COVID, right? So those additional funds were in there. There's no findings, clean opinion with no findings. And then we had to re-review the extra classroom audit report, procedural. We already did that in a previous meeting, but we had to do that because when we submit the reports to the State Education Department now, they need to have very specific timelines for when we're going to accomplish the task outlined in the report. So it really was just a procedural recommendation. So anything to, to add?
That was great.
All right.
Thank you very much. All right, some dates to remember. We have Board Tour and Visit Allen's Creek this week on the 15th. Just a show of hands, who's going to be there? Okay, great. Thank you. I'm sure all students, both here and out in TV land, will be very disappointed to hear we have winter recess from the 23rd through the 2nd of January, and our next regularly scheduled meeting will be January 10th. All right, moving on to the financial report, Mr. Vesby.
Yes, for your consideration, the acceptance of the single audit report as previously discussed.
Can I get a motion on the single audit report, please? Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Renee. Any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? That carries.
Okay. Again, next for your consideration, the extra classroom activity audit report, and, and again, the portion is the reapproval of the corrective action plan with an updated timeline as, as to when those tasks will be completed.
Great. Can I get a motion on the single classroom report? Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Emily. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. And that is it for.
I think that brings us to the.
Yes, Capitol Project.
Okay, tonight, we are excited to provide an update on the Capitol Project work that, that really has been in discussions for many years around the district. So we'll give a brief update in terms of, of previous discussions and process, and then we'll move quickly at a very high level to discuss thus far, you know, some of the scope of work around the district. And again, we'll try to keep this brief. This is really an introductory conversation. There'll be time at, you know, at a later date to really get into some of the details here. We have Brian Slinski here from SEI Architects, Jeff Beardsley, obviously integral part of our conversations and discussions, so Brian and I will, you know, kind of head back and forth, and I'll just kind of start with, you know, an agenda and some of the summary. So really, tonight, again, tonight's goal is to talk about, you know, where we're at, talk a little bit about the process and, and how we got to where we are, and then talk about the instructional impact, which really, I think, you know, Brian does a nice job outlining the main groupings and for the purpose of the Capitol Project, and then I'll wrap up with some very high-level summary financial considerations. So with that, Brian, if you want to jump in?
Great. Good evening, everyone. I was told to go fast, so I'm going to move along. We went through a lot of this in detail at the retreat. I'm going to go quickly. We started with the building condition survey process. I think all of you are aware of that, that you're doing that every five years these days. With that, the $294 million worth of work that will be spread out over at least a good 10-year period to do, so nobody panic. This is normal for a district your size, and we're working through these items along with some of the educational pieces we'll share as far as getting done in the next Capitol.
Brian, super, I'm sorry to slow you down, but for the community's sake, can you just share?
Sure.
What a building condition survey is?
Absolutely. Every five years, by the State Education Department, you are required to do a survey on the architectural and engineering components of every room of every building within the district that is student occupied. An architect and engineer team goes through each room, categorizes, checks for code, regulations, structural, infrastructure, those type things, and gets logged and recorded. That record goes up to the state of New York. The state of New York keeps that, and then when Capitol projects are done, they reference back to that, and they're also utilizing that for financing and funding sources. Yeah, tell me to slow down at any time. So within that and taking that into consideration, we started with a lot of collaboration, and I think it is important that a lot of groups were invested in this, the board here, yourselves, facilities teams, a district planning team, some building teams, which are the individual buildings themselves, with the principal leading that, and a financial team that puts all this together, and Mike will share that after. The board itself, for the public's consideration, some of the involvement, this has been going on for almost a year now, monthly building tours going on, the survey results, planning. There was a significant workshop in May, and then recently, we just did another workshop, actually a retreat, where we went through some more of these items in more detail. But in every sense, we're continually responding off of your responses, and we make edits and corrections as we go with your guidance. As far as the facilities teams, the facilities team meets bi-monthly. We continue to go through different iterations, also looking at the building condition survey, working with Jeff's team here, looking at specific line items that crop up along the way, maintenance items, things that he can't take care of on a day-to-day in our larger scale, and we add those and adjust those within our planning, and then provide updates, analyze those costs, and then review constructability with your construction manager, campus construction management. Throughout that and some of the things that came back, this was a slide from one of those board meetings, and it's kind of a nice summary. The mental health things kind of stood out in each of the areas in the high school and middle school, some of the science rooms and where they're at, and part of the educational process and looking at parity between buildings. The portables here were definitely an item, and then dealing with some of the, the issues with the pool, and it sounded like you went on a nice tour here of the pool that, I'm sorry to say, we had to shut down. Allen Creek, Jeff, Mendon, Center Park, and Thornell Elementary Schools, all of these have very similar issues that came out. Again, we highlighted these, the mental health, definitely the secure entries, as I'll share on some of the planning, secure entries, although we are secure and we buzz you in with a visual and somebody can see to let you in, once you're in, you can, you can get into and run through the building. So secure entries in our new, looking at that in a new way. We bring you into a secure space, we leave you in that, and we don't release you into the building until you have proper credentials approved and/or you have a place to go, so that would be edited along the way. And then dealing with some of the locker room spaces and making those much more effective use for both the PE programs, giving them better storage, better utilization of some of the spaces and the rooms they're using, and then maybe take back some of the other areas to deal with some of the mental health functions.
Brian, if you could just keep down that slide for a second.
The other thing I think of importance is the infrastructure items, in particular, the generators. So, so as of right now, we, we sometimes sneeze and the power goes out in our elementary buildings, and so I think it's of critical note that generators are part of this project as well.
Yes, and I will highlight those down, further down the road, but thank you, yes, they are in the bottom. And, and that is, these were things that stood out. A lot of things, especially during COVID, we've dealt with mechanical systems and filtration units, and I think people don't realize the strain we're putting on some of those systems to add the filtration, and so now we'll go back and correct and make those even better. So as we move forward and we face these things again and again down the road, that you have better systems in place. Okay, so scope. In reference to scope, I'm going to start here at Barker Road Middle School, and a lot of this has to do with some parity issues, but some of the big components are the portables. Your portables have been here forever. When you received them, they were already used. They were meant to be temporary, so we're going to be dealing with those in this project if it goes through. The existing pool, definitely some major issues there, and with the health department and ourselves had to deal with that issue, and then dealing with this whole area that circled in the blue related to smaller gym locker rooms and some toilet rooms. So what does that all mean? We started to look at this and dealing with the portables, had to bring them back into the building, and the great thought came out in dealing with the principal in relation to creating a central core, just like you have at your other middle school. So we're looking at realigning, and the green line is to bring into play one of the wings that kind of is in this lost pathway and realign that pathway and create a central core of the building. By doing so, a lot of things kind of turned out really well. By bringing in the portables into the building, we bring all of the low classrooms into play, or, or foreign language, as you might call them. That dispersed other areas, and some of that would is the technical classrooms, that so the technology then moved into, in this location, into an area that would be over by the gym, which is in red component. Okay? What that did was actually pulled our tech classes to the back of the building, able to use some loading dock and, and functions there, serviced that and put some of the louder functions in the back. The pink piece then is putting back what is a fitness component and a flex space, kind of similar a little bit to what is over at Sutherland, so they could use that for some of the PE functions and other functions within the building. That relieves space where the old fitness is, which is on the orange on the far left of the slide, and allows us to get those classrooms back into the building, and we realign what was further to the north of the, the left corner, some of the additional classroom functions into the old tech, so that's where tech is. Okay? And we, so we're, we're shuffling rooms there. All right? The green piece would become the core, and that would be the cafeteria. We would design that in more of that open plan in what we call our Shea Concept Kitchen. Your kitchen originally here was designed for two cafeterias. It is very large in size, and so we're able to reuse that space, bring it back down to scale, bring it to the outside of the building, so you don't have to cross the hallway with all the goods and services, and then bring the band room over, which will back up the stage, and so we've helped the music department out as well, because then they can bring their equipment right onto the stage, and so we actually had a walkthrough, and he was very excited about that component, if we can move forward with this. Okay? So a lot of shuffling, but actually brings the building into great shape.
And I think that the key aspect of this is that the portables are at the end, so we, as another useful, we have to do something. So, you know, that's the catalyst that set this in.
Some, show you some pictures of that. These are, in fact, the portables is the first image down below. The, that left slide is the hallway. You can't see it very well, very well, but if you zoom in, we have calcification, so some of the block is starting to wick and fall apart. The next is the toilet rooms in by the cafeteria, which are so small, I, a big guy like me can't barely get in, although they're for middle school kids, but they're dated and, and they really need to go, go have fun and enjoy those if you have time. And then the cafeteria itself and an opening up that corridor, making that more friendly for. for the students. So some imagery in and around that. This was just a blow up, and one of the things I want to highlight, on the left side, was the orange rooms that we'll be rearranging. But in doing so, you see this blue component, which is part of our secure entry function, and realigning some of the office component to get that, and in doing so, handling some of the mental health pieces and the nurse component in this area. Okay? Slide outside, just to show that within this building also, we would be dealing with, number one is where the portables go away, but then allows us to look at where the tennis courts are, and then tennis courts have been abandoned here for quite some time. And working with PE and athletics, we determined that that would be a great, kind of a flexible soft surface area where they can do multiple components in and around every sport you have, but mostly some track functions and maybe even some of the Nordic track pieces. Okay, high school. Mendon High School, that is. Mendon High School, one of the biggest challenges here has been science. This is very much a parity issue as well, trying to compare that to Sutherland, and the last bigger project, Sutherland had updates to all their science rooms. And if you go over there, you'll see the space to be able to both have classroom instructional pieces and lab pieces within the same room. That works very well, as I'm told during some of the teaching components, so you guys want to bring that here. Within this building, there's some impacts in regards to the facade of the building. If you look at the concrete ribs, they are solid. We can't expand these rooms by cutting those. So we're either knocking down that whole front end of the building to expand these rooms, and/or we're going to do something that we're showing here, which is, we're going to reutilize those spaces, take out what is a support room or an ancillary room to each of those science rooms, call it storage, ancillary, or prep, make that room a little larger, and put functions like earth science and that into those that don't need as much lab space. And then you're looking at the pink, the pink would be an addition where we would add science rooms as new build to the north side of the building. Okay? What it means on the opposite side of the hallway of the front, or the piece that overhangs the front entry, is we're taking three rooms and making two science rooms to make them adequate in size. So by reusing all the science rooms we got and then taking three to two, we actually needed some more space. That's also going to help us here in some of the mental health services, because as we move them around, we can take other rooms, and I'll show you that next. Okay. Here's some of those rooms, some of the tight spaces, some of the aging out of some of those science areas, so we're showing that in these slides here. Here's a little bit more of that. They don't look crazy, crazy, but they are very tight, very hard to move around, and very hard to do some of the lab functions within these rooms. So this is back to the first floor, where I'm just going to highlight the addition. Again, we'll have two stories on that. To put that addition into play, we are bumping out a couple of rooms, and we'll have to rebuild some of those spaces. But what it does foster is adding some toilet rooms for the staff here, which are non-existent. You do have a few, but they're so dated, and we're going to clean those up and be able to help there, too. We shuffle one person out of the central core here, and in the blue space, we're able to enhance some of the guidance in mental health services within the central core. This is just to show you those ribs in the front, and the bottom photo where you're looking at the, as you're standing in the front, the left side of the building, this is where the addition would happen. And so it will push into the first row and a half of parking, and we'll actually have to make a slight adjustment to that parking. Also, in addition, areas of assembly locks, this is a component throughout the entire district. This is dealing with some of the lockdown situations and places like gyms, auditoriums and those, and how we lock those down in a severe situation. We are reviewing some of that in advance, but we will be taking care of a lot of that as we move forward. Computer room cooling, auditorium card readers to get in and out, is part of that assembly issue, security upgrades in the tech areas, that's cameras, dealing with some of the areas that you need more coverage. Heating converters, heating units in corridors and areas that they're failing, head into the PA or announcement system, updating the team rooms and timing and scoreboard in the pool area. Okay. It's not moving. This is just to show the outside of that, where the site, I should say, tennis courts will be upgraded and adding pickleball within those, so it'll be tennis and pickleball combined for those. Everybody seems to be getting excited about pickleball out here, so that's cool. And toilet rooms, so again, bringing some parity back, we did those at Sutherland, we'll be putting toilet rooms here at Mendon. At Sutherland.
Brian, if I could just pause for one second. There's a substantial amount of this work going into Barker Road and Mendon High School. And the reason for that in particular is because around 18 years ago, when we had our last major Capitol project, it was the building of a new Caukens Road Middle School. So Caukens Road Middle School was built, was state-of-the-art everything at the time. And then Sutherland, if you recall, back at the time, we were considering demolishing Sutherland and moving it or rebuilding it, and we ended up gutting it. So Sutherland and Caukens Road both have, at the time, state-of-the-art facilities. Fast forward, we're two decades later, and Barker Road hadn't changed from three decades prior to that. And so Barker and Mendon are extremely lagging behind in some real basic needs, especially relative to parity. So Brian highlighted the science rooms, for example, at Mendon High School. It's very difficult to have labs at Mendon High School, science classrooms, because of how confined they are. As a matter of fact, we have to limit the class size in many of them. And when you compare Mendon High School's science rooms to Sutherland High School, there is no parity. When you compare Barker Road Middle School Commons Area to Caukens Road, there is no parity. And what we're trying to do is provide all of our community members, regardless of where their students attend, their children attend, a similar experience relative to the structure of a school. So if I'm a science or technology proponent, if I go to Caukens and Sutherland right now, at least the physical plan allows me many more opportunities. And so we're trying to close that gap and provide similar opportunities at Barker and Mendon. Similarly, from a social-emotional standpoint, if you go to Caukens Road, you're enjoying as a student, being spread out, not being on top of each other, and being able to socialize during lunches, during study halls, and it kind of takes the temperature and brings it right down for students to be able to spread out, be at circle tables. Here at Barker Road, we are the same as when we were when we were Pittsford Middle School. We have students on top of each other and not being able to spread out in a real confined area. So what this proposal does is it opens up Barker Road, it focuses on science and technology, it deals with a broken pool that can't be repaired at this point, and it allows for our students at Mendon High School to have a similar experience as their sister school at Sutherland.
Yes, thank you. Good ad. So each of the other buildings is also getting some love here in regards to the emergency generator at Sutherland. Some exciting things like sanitary lines, and I know everybody gets excited about that, but they do need to be fixed and repaired. And the chiller over there is aging out, so that unit needs to be replaced. Along with some of the site items, the tennis court replacement with pickleball, similar to Mendon, and there's some drainage issues over here in one of the fields that we'll be taking care of in this project. Caukens Road is, it's funny to me, everybody refers to this as the new building. It is, in fact, '06 went live, and it is 18 years rounding 20. It does need an emergency generator to handle some additional components, and the roof is coming up on its desire to be recoded, so there are some things there. And then heat pumps with your geothermal system, there's heat pumps throughout that building that need to be replaced because they are hitting 20 years. Okay. So then we go get the elementaries, and for time, I kind of put these all together and hit some common items throughout all of them because they're very similar. The secure entry issue that we talked about a little bit earlier, same thing for every one of the entries at the elementaries, area of assembly locks and mental health suites. So within each of the buildings, those components are being addressed in this presentation of the project. Allen Creek specifically, an emergency generator, and the gym roof needs to be taken care of. At Jeff Road, it is an emergency generator, again, in addition to the common items. Mendon Center, there's an emergency generator as well. Park Road, emergency generator, and Thornell, areas of assembly locks and a mental health suite. I guess that assembly was added again. So kind of similar components throughout. Some of them that don't denote emergency generators are in the current project, so those are being addressed. The Lom Building, just some highlight here is just securing the building envelope. This building you've had for years, it was granted to you by the Lom family. It needs some love, or the water damage is going to get so severe that we're just, it's going to fall apart. So most of this is some windows and some envelope components that we're dealing with historic preservation and getting through that. Transportation, we did replace one of the tanks for the unleaded, but now the diesel tank is due, so the diesel tank needs some love and attention, and there are a couple rooftop units in the older portion of this building. Timeline, is this still me, or do you want this one?
Thanks, Brian.
So just in terms of the timeline, that was an excellent review, a lot of information. Obviously, this is, you know, as I mentioned, a preliminary discussion. You know, there'll be many more opportunities to review all of those plans in detail. So just in terms of the timeline, you know, the timing of this project goes back several years. The implementation was delayed, and so now we're really looking at, and I'll roll this into some of the financial information, you know, for a vote in the spring. I think the, you know, the biggest misconception about a project timeline is even if we get the scope down, we vote for the project in the spring. So the timing is right now, we have, you know, $5.1 million of debt that now has been paid off from previous Capitol projects. We just made the payment. So from a fiscal standpoint, that allows us to move forward with this work with a minimal impact in terms of the local share, you know, the tax levy. And so the timing is right in terms of this project because we've paid off a significant portion of that debt. And this just shows you, you know, that that debt service schedule was about 9.9 million and is now falling to 4.7 million. Just a graphical representation of what that looks like. So what are we looking at for this budget? You know, you heard a number of close to $300 million in work. At this point, we're estimating that the scope of work that we just, you know, briefly discussed at 72 million, we have 14 million that we can use out of the Capitol Reserve that would lead us to bond about 58.5 million. That would still leave money in the Capitol Reserve for emergency projects. So if you look at it from a financing standpoint, the Capitol Reserve would cover roughly 19% of the project, leaving the district to bond 81%. This is just a breakdown by building, you know, so you're looking at about 17.1 million at Barker Road and about 19.3 at Mendon, and then you can see the various breakdowns at the other locations. Again, infrastructure, safety and security in terms of the secure entrances, and some minor renovations. The incidental budget, one of the things, you know, that this is actually troubling and challenging, and we just got a lower CPI number, so we're starting to see inflation back down a little bit, so that's positive. But we do have to have an escalation forecast in there, about 12%. That's new. That's based on where we are right now, so that takes away the ability to do some additional work and obviously impacts the budget. Some of these other contingencies that we put in place are normal. I have highlighted about an extra $500,000 for security cameras. That's the infrastructure, that's the storage, that's the system itself. We've been advised from technology that this is something that we definitely need to address going forward, and that's an important aspect of our security program. So what are we looking at? About 74% in aid from the state, a little bit lower bond percentage than probably has been discussed in the past. And that's because the addition at Mendon has a little bit lower of a building-able unit in terms of that new space. It is restricted, we're restricted by how much we can actually do in terms of addition and get state aid on. So that figure came down a little bit overall. And then an interest rate at 4%, which, you know, is again reflective of the environment. Average principal and interest payment about 4.4 million over the 17 years. I added this quickly, just graphically, to show, on the left, including the Capitol Reserve, 36% of this proposed project would come from the local share and 63% overall. So if you consider the money we've already saved, there's a, you know, there's a big chunk that we've already saved, you're looking at, you know, a decrease of about 12% with the ongoing financing, right? So overall, you're looking at the state's building aid covering about 75% of the ongoing costs. Wanted to show it both ways to be fair, because we've already saved that 14 million in the Capitol Reserve. So really, the chart on the right is more accurate about the project. And I think this is important because obviously, in these economic times, we're always concerned about, wow, $72 million project, what's it going to cost us and how's that going to impact our budget and our fiscal future? So there is, you know, a good portion of this that's covered by the state. So what's it look like overall? We're dropping about 5.1 million. Debt service, we'd add about 4.4 on average back on. So we're not going, we're not, you know, going right back up to where we were in terms of that. So there is lower debt service overall. And what's interesting is the local tax impact is reduced by about $2.2 million. So I think when you look at the budget impact in '23, '24, we could have dropped that debt off, and normally, we would have replaced it by now. So the timing is perfect in terms of, we're not going to go out and finance a project up to that same level, so we'll realize a savings fiscally overall. So I think that's important to note. And when we start looking at the tax levy, we would look at about a $1.1 million increase, you know, which, you know, it equates to about, you know, 27 cents per thousand. So right now, the early estimate is it would impact, you know, a $300,000 house by about $73 annually. These are all very, very early estimates. You know, I wanted to have, you know, just a high-level picture of what does something like this look at? You know, I've kind of, I've kind of put it in motion, worst-case scenario at this point, you know, just from an illustrative standpoint. There's still a lot of work to do in terms of, if we didn't do anything right, how does that compare? So we'll have further analysis and communication. But again, this is a very high overview of where we stand right now, and I think addresses some really important infrastructure needs in the district.
Thanks, Mike. I would just add that when we talked about the timing is right, we knew that two years the timing was wrong, even though that the work needed to be done. There is no way at the start of COVID, we were going to ask for the community to vote on a referendum. And so that work was delayed, good, bad, or indifferent. But we're dealing with a lot of work we need to do to keep our buildings operating. But it's right right now, too, because this year, as we look at our, what we'll be asking our community for our tax levy relative to the budget vote, that also looks like it's going to be around the zero range. So. So our tax cap should be close to zero, which I think is also a, a reason why this is a good time for the capital project as well.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Look forward to the opportunities that the public will have to learn more about this project as we move forward. With that.
I have one more. And I'll share this just for the community. For those of you that don't know Brian Slinski and SEI, they've been working with us since the, the last project. One of the huge benefits of working with Brian and his, his company right now is that they know every crevice of every area of every building of every room, and, and they've, they've probably done 14 different renditions of our plans to get us to where we are right now, specific to different requests or, or different circumstances. So just want to thank Brian and SEI for, for all of their work and for their highest level of expertise in, in working with us.
With that, we'll move on to human resource report, Mr. Clark.
Good evening. First, for your consideration, you'll see the professional staff report. We have one certificated staff appointment, three school-related professional appointments, two school-related professional resignations. We also have winter coaching salaries and volunteers for you.
May I please get a motion on the human resource report? Thank you, Robin. Thank you, Renee. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, for your consideration is the support staff report. We have two clerical appointments, two clerical resignations, four transportation appointments, one transportation retirement, one custodial resignation, one food service appointment, and one food service resignation.
May I please get a motion on the support staff report? Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Sarah. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Moving on to special education report, Ms. Woods.
Good evening. The CSE and CPSC recommendations are on the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. Superintendent's report, Mr. Piro.
I'm happy to announce there is not a need for an executive session this evening. A few things to, just called to everyone's attention, on the consent agenda, our policy's 1340 Code of Ethics and Policy 3211 Use of Assistance Animals. As far as my report, could not be prouder of the, the previous week that we had. I feel that we had one of the highest levels of community engagement that we've had in quite a while. We've worked with our partners such as PTSA, the town, the village, as we celebrated everything from Inclusivity Week, we facilitated a power hour on anxiety, which drew a full house at Caukens Road Middle School. We had candlelight night where we were able to see our students perform. We saw businesses thrive and our community members enjoy festivities. We also had our inclusivity showcase held at Caukens Road where the stakeholders, our stakeholders could learn about, celebrate, and support progress towards a more inclusive environment here. And in our effort to partner with PTSA, we produced a showcase of student voices on how they see inclusion in our schools, and that was called I Am Pittsburgh Schools. And I would like for all of us to watch this together so we can see the impact on our current efforts while keeping an eye towards continuous improvement so all of our students can feel a sense of belonging and affirmation in our schools. So when I look at this video, I think it's a light of hope, it gives us a flavor of what it's like when we move in a direction that's student-focused, that's geared towards making sure all students feel comfortable walking through our doors and being who they are in our buildings. So with that, Aaron, if we could put on the short video.
Welcome to our Pittsburgh schools. We are proud of our students' achievements in academics, athletics, art, and music. Their success is the result of hard work, exceptional teachers, and our commitment to making sure students feel included, supported, and heard. Providing an equitable and inclusive environment is a priority for Pittsburgh schools. We celebrate diversity of thought, race, religion, ability, gender identity, and experiences. Today, you will hear from our students about what Pittsburgh schools means to them and how they are part of a community that strives for continuous improvement.
When I think of the Pittsburgh schools, whether it's elementary, middle school, the high schools here, I think of great kids and teachers willing to help.
To me, Pittsburgh means putting in 100% effort to be your best and do your best, and not just necessarily being perfect, but always working to be a better person and be the best version of yourself every day.
Pittsburgh schools mean to me is to be inclusive, to be understanding, and to work forward and better. Because Pittsburgh schools, we do make mistakes, but what they do is that they learn from these mistakes and move forward with it.
It's more inclusive in middle school, thanks to things like clubs, GSA, and just, it's easier to meet new people.
At our football games, like when we do our chants and stuff, it's just like second nature to wrap their arms around everybody, and we just jump together, and it doesn't matter who you're standing next to, it just, it just happens, and that makes me feel just special and included.
When they're on the buddy bench and they need someone to play with, it makes me feel good when my friends include me.
I include other kids sometimes. We play with my best friends, and if someone wants to ask if they can play, I just say yes.
I'm kind, I'm helpful, and, and I'm a unique person. That's what makes us all different.
When I came to America, I had to make new friends. It was kind of hard to make new friends in different languages, different places that I never like used to be in. That was the biggest obstacle that I just had.
My kindergarten teacher was Miss Fernandez, and they actually let me translate it because that's, at that time, I hadn't learned English yet.
The teachers are absolutely amazing. I had the best relationship with my English teacher last year, and that just made it so much better.
Well, one of my schools make me happy, it's when I like to stay after-school activities.
The teachers are really supportive, and I feel like just the environment is nice. She's killing it, she beat me in both games today.
Last year, I started a BSU, which is a black student union. And the thing is, the school is like majority white people, and a BSU is not just for black people, right? So I felt really included when people, my friends that were, that were white, you know, came to the group, listened to what I had to say, listened to the struggles that people, black students and people of color in general face in the Pittsburgh School District. I feel like the school is going towards being inclusive, trying to learn about new things, and I feel like that's just a great environment.
I think just with so many clubs in our school, we're all able to get very involved, and I think that is the first step to getting everyone included. We're actually part of Best Buddies, which I feel like is one of the most important clubs, spreading inclusion and positivity.
Coming from the city, going out to here and somewhere like in the suburban areas, it's really like nice to have people that I know as well. We can relate and stuff, and we can talk about it. And everyone at the school, they're so welcoming and stuff, and they don't like judge you from where you are, what you look like, they judge you from like the person you are from the inside.
Be cool, be kind, and be happy.
I hope what our students said inspired you, brought you a sense of pride, but also served as a reminder that our work is not finished until every student feels the same kind of belonging. It is the unique stories of our students that come together to create our Pittsburgh schools.
I am me, I am Pittsburgh schools.
We are Pittsburgh schools!
I am me, I am Pittsburgh schools.
I am Pittsburgh schools!
To our communication department and for our students that participated, to our equity coordinator that, that assisted with that. But, you know, when I, when I watch that, I think about, you know, part of the other purpose of putting this together is for people to understand that our students are all different. We, we have 6,000 different students with different needs, with different backgrounds that walk through the door, and our job is to provide each one of them with, with two things that are not in conflict with one another. We need to provide them with a sense of rigor wherever they are, right? They need to be challenged where they are. And we also need to provide them with a sense of belonging and affirmation. And those two things go hand in hand. So when we get to an environment where kids are feeling really good, and we're challenging them at the highest level to be the best that they can be academically and personally, we've created a winning school district. And, and that's where our work will continue to be, both that balance between rigor and inclusivity, and couldn't be prouder of, of the work we're doing in the direction we're headed. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mike, and it was really nice to see that very inspiring video. At this point, can I get a motion on the consent agenda? Thanks, Jeff. Thanks, Renee. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Any old business? Any new business? With that brings us to public comment. We do have one submission this evening, and it was asked that we would read that. It's from John Sussman, 29 Sturbridge Lane, Pittsburgh, New York. He writes, "Item F, Policy 1340 Code of Ethics Would Require Board Members to Avoid Even the Appearance of an Undisclosed Conflict of Interest Remain Apolitical. I would like to suggest that more clarity is needed around the idea of remaining apolitical. What specific behaviors would board members be prohibited from? The word political feels too expansive without further qualification, considering political activities sometimes include responding to public feedback or considering or raising issues of school governance that someone somewhere might perceive as political. Some matters on which board members may need to weigh in that could be considered by some to have political dimensions might include safety, public health, and curriculum. Partisan might be an alternative or explicit statement that the intent of the policy, if this is true, is to prevent board members from delegating their independent judgment to specific, I'm sorry, to special interests partisan groups." Thank you for the chance to offer public comment. And one thing I would add to the comment that was provided is that we did have some conversation this summer at our board retreat where this policy was discussed and developed, and we settled on apolitical because we didn't feel that bipartisan covered all political parties in sentiment. But we will take it up in a further retreat to discuss this further, and we again appreciate John's comments. With that, and there being no further public comment, I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Sarah. And our next meeting is January 10th next year, so everyone have a wonderful night. Oh, I will take, all in favor? I was in favor, so I just moved on. Anybody opposed? Thank you all, and we'll see you next year.